Call the roll.
Alderman Yamas, Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Here.
Alderman Danau.
Here.
Alderman Franco, Alderman Seville. Alderman Hartburns, Alderman Smith. Alderman Bug, Alderman Lachey.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Present, please rise. We have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the pledge of allegiance to be followed by the invocation by Alderman Hartburns. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, you are good and your mercies endure forever. Father, God, we thank for my coming together for another city council meeting. We ask for God that you be with us as we make this city and reflect this city. We ask for God that you be with the men and women of our armed forces, those that have served, those that are serving. Be with the men and women of our police and fire, those that have served and those that are serving. Lord, we just ask that you be with this weekend for Fiesta project. We ask that you be with Alderman Garza constituents who receive their Make It Beautiful Awards. And God, we ask that you be with the Kane County Broncos as well as the 50th year celebration for the Blackhawk Sports Booster. We ask for God that you bless this individual, then bless us collectively. We ask all your name.
Amen. Thank you, Alderman Hartburns. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant at Arms for this meeting? Motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mohammed, can we go on to presentations, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, to all of our guests tonight. We have a number of presentations tonight as we celebrate excellence in Aurora. Those who represent 50 years of work, young leaders who are up and coming here in the city. Tonight, we'll begin with our first presentation honoring an organization that's been around for a half century. We're going to ask the mayor and Alderman Franco, if you please step down, honoring the West Aurora Blackhawks Sports Boosters.
You know, for Alderman Franco, I think we're waiting for a few more people to show up for the Sports Booster. So if you mind, can we go on to the next one and then we'll return to them?
No, bro. We'll go from the Sports Boosters to some sports stars who are here. Now with us tonight, we're going to ask the mayor, they please come on down. Alderman Garza, you can come down as well. She recommended them to be here tonight. Tonight, we are joined by the Kane County Broncos Silver U-14 Tournament Champions, the Aurora Stars. These young men have worked hard all season, representing Aurora for the Boys Baseball of Aurora, the BBA. They represented us in the Silver Competition for Kane County, taking home the tournament championship, and they represented Aurora nationally at the Cal Ripken Experience Tournament where they played in Myrtle Beach. Representing Aurora. Really set a standard for excellence in athletics, and they work hard in school as well. As we honor them, we'll ask that you show your applause for each and every one of them. You'll receive your certificate, shake hands with Alderman Garza and Mayor Irvin. First, please welcome Juan Carlos Anaya. Harry Fonseca. Daniel Gonzalez. Michael Green. Jordan Henderson. Sergio Lemos. Diego Mauricio. Rajan Mendoza. Christian Mendoza. And Adam Adon Rocha. Big round of applause for the U-14 Aurora Star. Oh, you can do better than that, Aurora. This is the future. Showing how much we love them. We're also represented by Coach Juan Anaya, Coach Serena Acevedo, Coach Ray Fonseca couldn't make it, but lead manager, keeping the energy going, Jose Acevedo. I'm going to ask Mr. Acevedo if he can say a few words about the team.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Like he said, we just came back a couple weeks ago from Myrtle Beach. Great experience, a lot of talent out there, great weather, a lot of fun. And our first year in the Kane County Bronco League, you know, first year champions. And like I said, it's a big accomplishment for Boys Baseball of Aurora, which I'm also part of. I was here last year with the champions last year in the Inhouse League. And like I said, it's just an honor to be here and a great time, great experience with these boys. And I love these guys, man. They did real good this year and made me proud and made all their parents proud, the whole family, and great experience. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Again, taking home the championship for Kane County Broncos Silver League and representing Aurora all the way in Myrtle Beach. Alderman Garza, you can stay down. Tonight, yeah, definitely. Tonight, we also, and Alderman Garza's down, we are honoring the War Two Make It Beautiful Awards. Every year, Alderman Garza will host the annual Make It Beautiful Awards for her ward that encourages residents to complete home and yard improvements, which will have this domino effect throughout the neighborhoods throughout the entire ward. She has five winners tonight, and they will each receive a sign that Sandy has and an award on behalf of the mayor and the alderwoman. In fifth place, so we can look on the screen, fifth place is 109 State Street, Mr. Victor Pena. We'll give him his award. He also receives $100. National applause. Fourth place, you can see on the screen, 767 Spring Street, Maria Ramirez. You guys are outside. You can make your way in. We don't want to miss anybody. We can just form a line on the wall. Thank you. All right. Third place is at 715 Columbia. On the screen again, you see the beautiful renovations, Cecilia Perez. Fourth place receives $100. Third place receives $300. The second place winner this year for the Make It Beautiful Awards for War Two is at 110 North Smith Street, Daisy Vargas. Come on down. I'm sorry. Here's your shift. Come on down. A big round of applause again for the girls. A big round of applause for Daisy. Daisy's prize for second place is $500. So thank you, Daisy. Great job. And our first place winner this year of the War Two Make It Beautiful Awards at 824 Fulton Street, Julio Gonzalez and Linda Martinez. Big round of applause. Julio Gonzalez and Linda Martinez, seeing the beautiful renovations, home improvements. And as first place winners, they receive $715. Alderman Garza, is anything you'd like to say about the competition of the ward?
Well, I'm so sorry that people sometimes they cannot make it because they work in second shift sometimes. If they find somebody, they send somebody better. The money's here, so probably they want to come tomorrow to our office. Congratulations, everyone. Really, they make a lot of effort to make it beautiful on these houses. Myself, so we have 48 people subscribe for the competition, so we select only five. So it's kind of hard because so many people make it so beautiful. So we took pictures. The first picture, we took in April, then in April. And so the last picture, we took in the end of July. So they make a lot of difference. So really, this money helping to help what money is spent to make it beautiful, the houses. So really, really appreciate it for be enthusiastic and do this. Because it's very nice when you have your house nice with a lot of flowers. And it's sad when you see the next door, they didn't do nothing. And so, you know, but I know in a block where somebody start putting flowers and putting nice, the next one, they do the same. So this is like a, yes.
Sounds like a hint.
Good job. Thank you. Make It Beautiful Awards, maybe call them the Do Something Awards from now on. Great job, great job. Again, you know I can come in. Please come in, everyone. We don't want to miss anybody. Tonight, Alderman Franco, if you can join us now. We are honored to have with us the West Aurora Blackhawks Sports Boosters, who this year, representing 50 years of service here in this city. If our Blackhawks Sports Boosters, please make your way down with the mayor. 1969, 79, 1969, 70 school year, the Blackhawks Sports Boosters have helped build one of the finest high school athletic programs in Illinois. They consist of parent and community volunteers of West Aurora School District 129, who strive to promote school spirit and school pride. They take an active role in making the West Aurora athletic programs along with the middle school programs and elementary, and all the events more memorable for athletes and their families. If we could please give a round of applause for 50 years of service for West Aurora Blackhawks Sports Boosters. Alderman Carl Franco. This poor Alderman Carl Franco has been a member of the board for 11 years, and he served as president of the Boosters for three years. Alderman Carl Franco. I'll turn the mic over to Alderman Franco, the representative from the Booster.
Well, I just want to say how proud I was to serve on the Booster Board. We have a number of great organizations in the city, but I think what makes this one fairly unique is that when we measure tenure for people that volunteer, we don't measure it in years at this board. We measured it in decades. We have a founding father here for 50 years. We have a couple of board members that are here 20 and 30 years. It's amazing. So I think when you have that longevity, the passion and enthusiasm for what they do, it never wanes. And I think it's reflective about the city of Aurora. I think it's very generational that we do this, and I think that's what we are in Aurora too. We're very generational. So I think that's why we are successful as an organization. And I think that's why we are successful as a city of Aurora. So thank you so much for what you do. Thank you.
Well, as one of the spokespersons for the Blackhawks Sports Boosters, it's really an honor to be honored this way. I mean, we put in countless hours of volunteer, and we raise a lot of funds. This year, we've crossed over, we've given over $2 million back to District 129. And this year alone, we'll give about $100,000 back to District 129 in support of athletics. We are not able to do that without the support of the community, without the support of the West Aurora friends and the West Aurora fans. And we so appreciate how much the Aurora community, the greater Aurora community, supports the West Aurora Blackhawks Sports Boosters. We have members in our organization from across the country, alumni and friends of West Aurora. It's an amazing tradition, and we are 50 years part of that. And we want to thank all of you who've ever bought a T-shirt, ate a hot dog, attended a basketball game, ate some popcorn. Thank you. And if you haven't done that, if you haven't done that, get the schedule. We're there. We're always there. But thank you so much, Carl and Mayor, for the recognition of the organization. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Principal of West Aurora High School, Dr. Davis. And spokeswoman of West Aurora School District, Anna Gonzalez here as well. May I thank the people who may be remiss if we did not recognize who Alderman Franco spoke of as a founder, father of this group for 50 years, who's been a portion of the Blackhawks for more than 40 years, Mr. Neil Long. All right. Big round of applause again to the West Aurora Blackhawks Sports Booster. Just over $2 million they've given back to the young people and the staff, friends and the fans of West Aurora Schools. Thank you, Alderman Franco. When you walked in tonight, you walked into a party on the mall thanks to the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board. This weekend, not only begins Hispanic Heritage Month on Sunday, it is also the annual Fiesta's Patrias Parade and Festival. Congratulations to the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board. If all the board members can stand up so we can just acknowledge you. Here are the board members of the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board. They're standing all around the room. If we could give them a round of applause. A lot of information on our website and on social media, but it's on Saturday and Sunday with the parade on Sunday. The uniqueness about this parade this year, for the first time in the history of the Fiesta's Patrias Parade, or to our knowledge, any parade in Aurora, we have our first ever youth grand marshals. We're going to ask that any alderman who'd like to join the mayor, you know, there were sponsors of the events this weekend, please come on down. But today, we are honored to have with us our first ever youth grand marshals. They are siblings. Please welcome Rosio Miranda and Joaquin Miranda. These young individuals are committed to service in their country and their community. Both graduates of East Aurora High School. And also both proud soldiers of the United States Army. And simply, Rosio, Rosio, if you can step forward. Rosio is a former police cadet, a former 911 operator here for the city of Aurora. She is committed to health and wellness, and she conducts Zumba classes throughout the community, always giving back, inspiring her younger brother to follow in her footsteps with the military. Round of applause for Rosio. And our brother, if you can step forward, Joaquin Miranda, also known as Oscar. Oscar is a current Aurora Police Cadet. He's also the former commanding officer of the largest ROTC unit in the world from East Aurora High School. And he's the former national president of some group called Boys the Men. I think it's a singing group. I'm not quite sure. Looks like his sister, he's committed to the community mentoring younger people as well. They are committed because they follow in the footsteps of their mom who raised them as a single mom. Please give a round of applause to Veronica Chigano. Stand up, girl. Stand up. Raising her children, following her footsteps, giving back, and leading the health and wellness and the community. And so we present awards to both Rosio and Oscar.
I'm very proud as the chair of Fiesta's Patrias and the vice chair of the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board. When I read their bio, actually, I had known them for a while since they were little, and just the essence of their courage, their respect for people, their community, their commitment back to the community really stuck out, you know. And we discussed, how do we get the community youth involved with us? This is a perfect example. Highlighting and honoring youth like this, this is what this community about, is about. This is what Aurora is about, our youth. We should be proud. We should honor them. We should say, you know what? You did a great job. And that's why they are here. And I'm pretty sure this is a great beginning. And this is only the beginning. There's more to come.
Veronica, the mayor, also went to high school. Want to take one more picture? Please do. One more big round of applause. As they hug, we want to remind you that immediately following this presentation, there's a reception for the grand marshals right down the street of the Art and History Center. And tonight, we also honor the grand marshals of the parade as well. If you've been here in Aurora anywhere for the last 40 years, certainly you know them, or you at least know their restaurant, Tecca Atlan, right down on the corner. Let's give a round of applause. They've become legends here in the community. A big round of applause for Rafael and Maria Valencia. Hailing from, come on down, Mexico. They came here, built their family and their business right here in the city of Aurora. I don't want to say too much because the mayor has a proclamation that tells their history. But we know the commitment of not only Don Rafa, as he's called, and Mrs. Valencia, but of the Valencia family and the work that they do through Tecca, not just to feed our bodies, but to feed our souls and to feed this community in so many ways. Mayor Irvin has a special proclamation for the Valencias.
It is my honor and pleasure to read this proclamation. Rafael and Maria Valencia, grand marshals of the 2019 Aurora Fiesta's Patrias Parade. Whereas Rafael and Maria Valencia hail from the town of Tecalatan in Mexico and moved to Aurora, Illinois, to raise their family and start a family business. Whereas the Valencias brought the love and culture of their hometown to their new city and established Tecalatan Restaurant in downtown Aurora 40 years ago. Whereas the last four decades, Tecalatan Restaurant has been a staple in the community and a destination for many of the fine cuisine, affordable prices, customer service and family atmosphere. And whereas Rafael and Maria Valencia are still firmly involved in the family business, arriving at 3:00 a.m. every morning to prepare food and set the tone for the day. Give them a round of applause for that.
They're still out there working hard. That's the negative. Let me, oh, there's more.
Whereas Rafael and Maria Valencia will serve as grand marshals of the 2019 Aurora Fiesta's Patrias Parade hosted by the Aurora Hispanic Advisory Board on Sunday, September 15, 2019. Now therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, mayor of the city of Aurora, Illinois, on behalf of the Aurora City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15, the first day of Hispanic Heritage Month, as Rafael and Maria Valencia Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward.
Okay, yeah. They're also joined today by their children in Gretchen. Could all the Valencias stand up? Again, the parade, 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, and immediately following this event tonight, this presentation, we have their reception that they'll leave out for shortly, right down the street of the Art and History Center. Everyone is welcome.
Es un orgullo para nosotros en el board, darle este reconocimiento a Don Rafa. Este, no sé si quiera decir unas palabritas, por favor. He's very thankful. They're very humble. They don't want to speak. They don't like the highlight, but their work ethic is to be commended very much. And they've been a pillar, not only in the community, business-wise, family-wise. Whenever I hear somebody that a family has passed away, he's the first one that I think of. And he never says no. He takes care of the family, doesn't charge them when there's a funeral. So that's to be commended. We are going to have a reception right after this at 20, East Downer, in honor of our grand marshals, both the young adult, young adult, and the adult grand marshals down the street. We're going to have some food for you guys, drinks, and that way you guys can meet with the grand marshals. Thank you.
As the mayor takes his seat, we want to make our last public announcement. Tomorrow, September 11, 2019, 18th anniversary, of course, of September 11 tragedy. Tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m., we'll be at the Aurora Central Fire Station, 75 North Broadway, for our annual ceremony. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, August 27, 2019? There's been motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. We were about to start to get on to the regular business of city council. It's exciting to all of us, but maybe not as exciting to you as the party you're looking forward to going to at the Pierce Arts Center. So at this time, I'll give everybody a few minutes to file out before we get on to the regular business tonight. If you want to stay, feel free to stay. Or you can go. I say everybody stand up.
Congratulations.
Thank you. There are seven kids and like 24 kids, like great, great kids.
Very nice. Very nice. Okay, come in this way. I tripped over. Come back. I tripped over.
Over this?
As we wait for everybody, everyone to file out, I want to recognize some students from Matea Valley High School that are here doing their, give it up for Matea, in the house. Mustang! And then, we also have some folks from Rosary High School here, doing their government studies as well. Give it up for Rosary, Rosary in the house. Just wanted to say hi to you guys and welcome to City Council. It's good to see you. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the City Council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person, other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order, may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the City Council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authorities, following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Todd Stern.
Mr. Stern, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I want to begin by thanking you for your service to the City of Aurora. I'm very pleased with the direction you are providing to continue to enhance our great city. The presentations we saw tonight speak to that Aurora spirit. You have taken action, and continue to take action, to attract and support business, and the entrepreneur spirit which makes America strong. To that end, tonight you may take action on an update to City Ordinance six dash thirteen, which is the allowed area for alcoholic liquor. I recommend that you approve this ordinance update, which is allowed through Illinois law. This revision supports the very entrepreneurs that are investing in revitalizing our great city. The law and the ordinance update also contain specific guidelines which support and protect our community. This is a common sense resolution that will not disrupt our community, but rather enhance the dining experience of our residents. I thank you in advance for your support of Aurora business, and the entrepreneur spirit that helps vitalize and keep our city great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Marjorie Logman.
Ms. Logman, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My words may seem very declarative, but they are thought through, and they are meant for those that should hear them. There is an Aurora emitting from City Hall, somewhat created reality. Individuals caught in this reality are negating the concerns of a good portion of the populace. Instead of listening to the concerns, when it becomes uncomfortable, the administration has developed a lingo saying, "One is old, not caring about Aurora," and a critic to progress, which is untrue. Also, please stop manipulating social media. I applaud your efforts more if you would address facts and concerns presented, instead of using the lingo and retreating back into your creative reality. Life is more than an energy happening and a feeling. Trying to silence people trying to address corruption, lack of morals, self-origination, and shady business practices by using the lingo should cease immediately. If the caring, if the concerns of the caring citizens continue to be negated, we will take our voices to the polls. One, money used for plaques, balloons, celebrations, and parties only the elite can attend, including things like fifty-five thousand used for river edge Christmas lights, etc. It could be diverted to help the displaced people of the YMCA. What we will probably hear is that you hired consultants to figure out how to use the property for your dream population. Aurora has a huge alcohol problem. Do not vote yes to changing the footage for liquor establishments. Churches and schools have enough issues today without wondering what bar is down the street. The ones given leeway will be those who favor or have financial interests with the administration. Why do we name you our bars when the median income is sixty thousand dollars, and a lot of us can hardly afford what can be bought in the stores? Vote no for footage change. Thank you very much.
Can you call the next speaker, Clerk?
Minister Peggy Hicks.
Ms. Hicks, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Fox Valley Christian Ministry Alliance, the Aurora Christian Network, and also Pastor Andrew Ruiz with the Hispanic Ministers Alliance. I just want to say that we're, I'm here tonight on behalf of them, asking you to delay your vote on moving the current five hundred feet ordinance, liquor stores from churches and schools to your proposing one hundred feet. We have sent out letters, and some of you have received them, we're asking you to allow the community, allow for community input and discussion on these issues before taking a vote. It would be appropriate to hold similar information meetings in wards that might be impacted by the proposed amendment. No one has suggested that the passage of this long, passage of this amendment is time sensitive. And according to the meeting that we had the other day, there's no current pending applications that you need to vote on. However, its passage could create long-term problems for the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhoods. And I'm here particularly tonight because I have such a love for young people. And I think that we always want to give them a positive outlook. And sometimes passing liquor stores and places like that, you see people that are there that are belligerent, that are doing things, and I can remember one time passing and just seeing two people just go at it with each other. And so those are not the kinds of things that we need to promote. My number one concern are the kids and their safety. Just the other day, I reminded myself that I didn't want to become numb to the social ills. And I pray that we, as a council, as a city council elected by the people, don't become numb to the ill, social ills, and those things that affect our children. A famous theologian said, "When children are valued, their concerns are all of our concerns." I want to say that again. "When children are valued, their concerns are all of our concerns." And I think what's at issue here is that, what's the implication of having these liquor stores close to schools, as well as to the churches? So I'm asking that you take a thorough and thoughtful look at the ordinance. I pray that you will think about what those future problems may be. One prime example of that, we're always trying to improve and do things, is vaping. Now we have a health problem because of vaping. So I'm asking you tonight, City Council, to at least allow the public to have more time to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Fran Shaw.
Ms. Shaw, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. I'm here to address the changes to the liquor code as well. I have not seen the changes. You know, you can't find, even if you look on the website of the city, what exactly the changes are that you're proposing. It would be nice if citizens had an opportunity to look this over. But in doing some research, I did discover that two states in this country, California and Connecticut, have thousand-foot variances from schools, hospitals, churches. Other states have one hundred-foot variances. And most of them have the five hundred-foot variances. Now, I'm not really good at that, but that's about two and a half blocks. Today, our schools, our churches, and our hospitals are, have been targets of assaults. And I think we need to take a moment to look at what we're doing, if you indeed are changing that area. We want to keep children safe. And in a study by Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, and granted Baltimore's different from Aurora, but everywhere there was a packaged liquor store, a bar, there was more crime. I suggest you look that study up and take a look. I think that probably common sense would indicate that you might have problems sometimes around liquor stores and bars. And I am, I'm not for prohibition, I like to have a drink, I like to go to a bar, I am pro-business. But I think we can locate this and have just some, I'm asking y'all for common sense. Making the changes, if we have a good code that's five hundred feet, if someone needs an exemption, that's within our code, and you can do that, on a case-by-case basis. But I would suggest to you, Aurora should be a leader. Five hundred feet is good. Keep it where it is, you can exempt things, but if you want to keep the children safe, and that is what you were talking about, do some more research, let people take a look at this, and let the community give input. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk. Can you call the next speaker?
Mary Ann Vincent.
Ms. Vincent, you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I too am here to talk about the liquor change and the number of feet. I've lived in Aurora since nineteen eighty-five. Been a great place to raise our family. I am the mother of seven children, one is deceased, but still always in my heart, but thirteen grandkids. I volunteer at my church for an after-school program. There are many programs at churches where children are coming, whether it's VBS in the summer. But we, you know, to go walk into a school, if you have been to a school, what is on the door? Symbol of a gun with a line through it. We all know what that means, no guns. And on the school property, there are signs, no drugs, higher crime, it's higher sentencing. They're tougher on crimes of illegal drugs around schools. What is going on? What's happening? What is the advantage of this? I do not understand how it will keep our children safe. We, every meeting I come to, children are being honored for something. Tonight was no exception. I urge you to vote no, and I urge you to open this up to the city. Every ward should have meetings and hear from people. This is not gonna help our city, it's not gonna help our youth. Kids are gonna forge IDs, and they're gonna be going there. If, I mean, maybe they are already, but a hundred feet? This is, to me, insanity. So I ask you to please vote no. And as someone else stated tonight, I'm committed to the health and well-being of our youth. I work very hard, I'm involved in a health fair, I, a lot of what my volunteer hours are for our youth. And I know a lot of you too. I thank you for your time and your consideration to open this up to more discussion. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Judy Durham.
Ms. Durham, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Irvin, Council. I'm coming just to speak up for the people at four eighty North Garfield. These people were displaced, and it doesn't seem as though anyone is caring about them. I, we asked for them to come and share some of their experiences, but they don't feel that no one's listening. They understand that that property was a bad property, as far as living conditions. They also understand that many nuisance calls, violations, I mean, you know, people that live together. My heart goes out to them, a lot of the seniors, single moms. I said I was not going to be emotional, because I need people to hear. They were put in a hotel, no breakfast, lunch, or dinner for these people. And no one, I'm not sure, brought them food. No one thought that they wouldn't have a kitchen to cook. And when people talk bad about either my school district, one thirty-one, yay EA, or my city, Aurora, I always speak up for us. We're the city of lights, and we're the city with a heart. But I don't understand where that heart went for people. They're human, and they had needs. There was an older man that we talked to, and he has dementia. And those of you that know about dementia, know that it goes and comes. And so, he kept asking other tenants there, in the parking lot of the hotel, when do we get to go home? And every time, they reminded him that he was never going back to that place, he broke out in tears. So, I'm just asking, I don't know who would do it. I'm not trying to place blame on the owner, the city, whatever. I'm just asking that people have a conversation with those people that were displaced, and hopefully, there's some hope for those people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that concludes our public speakers at this time. You know, I know there are probably never all of them that want to comment on the liquor issue exception. And we'll hold that until we get to the item itself for discussion. But before we go on, I'd like, is John Curley here, before you leave, Ms. Durham? Is John Curley present? Can you just do me a favor and recap some of the things that we've tried to do for the displaced residents on Garfield?
Well, I think the first thing is, the city has posted the building three times, beginning with July second, to try and allow the residents to understand what was happening. The, there was posting on July second, there was posting on, I'm sorry, August second, and August seventh. And after hearings, on August seventh, we started a hearing process for the owner. That hearing process on the twenty-second resulted in a hearing finding when the ownership assured us that the building was vacant or being vacated, that it remained vacated.
For the purpose of making it safe?
For the purpose of making it safe. It does not have required alarms.
Fire alarms.
Fire alarms. So detection and notification for emergency responders is not working in the building. In addition to that, the second exit is not safe as well. It doesn't have power, so it doesn't have general lighting, emergency lights, exit signs, or the appropriate fire rating for that second exit. So the building is unsafe and still unsafe.
As a matter of fact, the fire alarm was actually pulled, and no response from the fire department, police department?
Correct, that happened, that happened on the twenty-second of August. We responded to a nine-one-one call from a resident, instead of the way it's supposed to work with the alarm notifying, the notification company that monitors the alarm to then call nine-one-one. So that's kind of a little bit of synopsis of the history of what's going on there. It is still unsafe, but we have been referring residents to social service agencies. We have started to talk to church-based help to try and find some assistance for these residences. So we are, we are trying to do what we can for the residences. But again, our responsibility is to make sure that there's a safe environment for them. We tried to warn them before, we had to take action to vacate the building. It's the owner that was not responsive to make the building safe. It's the owner that was not responsive to make the building safe. It's now the owner's choice apparently to not make the repairs to allow the residents back into the building. Those are not city responsibilities, residents.
And also, Mr. Curley, you also put an all-call-out to all other landlords in the city of Aurora that might potentially have apartments available. Is that correct?
We are doing that and we have already received at least a few opportunities. We did receive, we finally received rentals from the landlord today, literally this morning. So we've been asking for information on how we can get in touch with who's there and who's still not made accommodations. And our hearing, our continuing hearing every week, which will be on Thursday morning, will again ask them who's moved out, who needs help, and we'll further try and assist people who do.
Judy, is there any way that you can help the city with that? Because you know who some of the residents are. The city is willing to help, but if we don't know where they are and you do, we appreciate your help. Because the knowledge that you have is power for us to help the residents. Thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. All right, let's go on to mayoral announcements. Clerk, can you read the first item under mayoral announcements?
19-0748. In compliance with the TIF Act, this agenda item shall serve as the city's announcement of its intent to establish a tax increment finance district for 75th Street and Ogden Avenue.
This is a non-action item. I will read the language. Tonight I'm announcing the availability of the redevelopment plan and project and eligibility study for the proposed 75th Street and Ogden Avenue TIF district. The documents are on file at the city clerk's office and are available for public review. With this announcement, the city begins the formal process of creating the proposed TIF district, which will include mailed notices, published notices, the joint review board meeting, and a public hearing. No action need be taken on this item. Can you read the first item under mayoral appointments? And if, and when she reads everyone's name under mayoral appointments, whether you're a new appointment or reappointment, if you are in the room, can you stand up when she reads your name so we can recognize you?
19-0438. A resolution reappointing Jim Pilmer, Alexi Alexandra, Clayton Mohammed, and Vernon La Via as the City of Aurora's at-large representatives to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to approve the resolution, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding the resolution? There being none, clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 aces.
All right, well, we give Jim Pilmer, Alexi Alexandra, Clayton Mohammed, Vernon La Via a round of applause for agreeing to continue to serve our community. Clerk, will you read the next resolution under mayoral appointments?
19-0540. A resolution appointing Glenda Blake Moore and Stephanie Math and reappointing Tasha Moss, Kimberly Harris, Cynthia Miller, Deb Grass Johnson, Mark Dale Jr., and Adrian Coleman to the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board.
Got a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman, I'm sorry, Alderman Yamas?
Wow, that's flashback. That was a flash, bro. Flashback. We'll be getting one soon.
Alderman Yamas, I apologize. Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Leave Alex alone.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith? Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution approved. One more round of applause. All right. Clerk, can you read the next item?
19-0685. A resolution reappointing Michael Scott Collins to the Aurora's Grand Army of the Republican Commission.
Now, there's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions concerning this resolution? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 aces.
Motion carries. Resolution approved. Thank you, sir. Can you read the last item under appointments, mayoral appointments?
19-0688. A resolution reappointing Carmen Armstrong and Timothy Olker to the Aurora Civil Service Commission.
All right, there's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions, discussions regarding the resolution? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
All right, a round of applause for Ms. Armstrong who stands. And if all of you would meet me down in front, we'd like to take a picture. All right, clerk, can we go on to the consent agenda? Read that in full.
Item 19-0115. A resolution establishing the maximum number of Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Chen Chen Asian Garden Incorporated doing business as Big C Sushi and Noodles, 2009 West Calina Boulevard. 19-0557. A resolution authorizing payment to Testing for Public Safety LLC doing business as IPSP as the provider of services for the 2019 Fire Department promotional testing. 19-0563. A resolution to enter into an agreement with Dr. Friedman as a provider of psychological assessments for public safety candidates. 19-0646. A resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase a new John Deere Model 710L Backhoe Loader from Westside Tractor Sales for the Water and Sewer Maintenance Division. 19-0670. A resolution authorizing the reimbursement of eligible costs for Archego Group One Incorporated doing business as El Jefe, 1271 North Lake Street, in Tax Increment Finance District Number Five in the amount of $33,000 for the installation of a new grease trap. 19-0673. A resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to execute contract change order number one in the amount of $100,000 to add additional funds to the purchase orders utilized to replace lead water service lines within the city's right-of-way. 19-0687. A resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to enter into an agreement with Environmental Cleansing Corporation, 16612 South Crawford Avenue, Markham, Illinois, 60428, in the amount of $125,075 for the demolition of Motel 6. 19-0698. A resolution establishing Cobra Insurance Monthly Rates effective January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. 19-0699. A resolution authorizing agreement for administrative services with Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company for PPO and Value HSA Group Health Prescription Benefits Management Plan, Flexible Spending Dental Cobra and Stock Loss Plan Administration for period January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0702. A resolution establishing health and dental insurance monthly rates of contributions for pre-Medicare retirees effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0703. A resolution establishing OAP and Value HSA health insurance plans and rates effective January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0704. A resolution authorizing a renewal agreement with Aetna to administer a Medicare Advantage Plan for Medicare Eligible Retirees for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0705. A resolution establishing Blue Cross Blue Shield Advantage HMO for group healthcare services for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0707. A resolution authorizing Sun Life Insurance to provide life insurance services for January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. 19-0725. A resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from LSC Aurora LLC doing business as Lau Seshwan located at 4309 East New York Street, Aurora, Illinois, 60504. 19-0729. A resolution approving an agreement with Marketplace City of 2018 West Oakdale Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60657 to perform purchasing searches for technology-related goods and services. 19-0732. A resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to enter into an agreement with H Linden and Sons Water and Sewer Incorporated, 722 East South Street, Unit D, Plano, Illinois, 60545 in the amount of $189,000 for the demolition of Fox Valley Inn. 19-0744. A resolution between the City of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department to enter into an agreement with East Aurora School District 131 concerning police, school resource officer program, and crossing guard program at District 131. 19-0747. An ordinance amending Section 5-56 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Aurora to repeal a requirement that operators at Aurora Municipal Airport sell aviation fuel at least 25% above the purchase price such operator paid to purchase said aviation fuel. 19-0762. A resolution authorizing the Police Department to accept the donation of a school bus. 19-0605. A resolution approving the purchase and installation of an LED sign for 2424 Hoffen Richter Road and Ward 9 from Doyle Signs Incorporated as Illinois in the amount of $55,730.
There's been a motion to approve Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or motions to remove any items from consent agenda? There being no questions or motions, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 aces.
Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Let's go on unfinished business. Clerk, will you call the first item under unfinished business?
19-0496. An ordinance amending Chapter 6, Alcoholic Liquor, Section 6-13 of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Allowed Areas.
Been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Before we go on to a voter act, take any questions from the Alderman? Ms. Spencer, do we have Melissa Spencer present? Can you do me a favor and give us a synopsis of what you talked about last week? And I think there's a little bit of confusion on this liquor license change. This isn't the hard, fast rule. This is an exception to the rule in certain circumstances, correct?
Correct. Basically, in summary, this allows applicants who currently would not be able to apply because they fall within the distance requirement. It allows them to apply for a license. There's still an extremely high burden for them to do so. First, they have to apply to the city clerk. The city clerk would forward that to an administrative hearing officer who would then review the factors. Also, when the clerk receives the application, the clerk will be forwarding that information to any of the Aldermen. So if they want to submit any information, that will be reviewed by the administrative hearing officer as well. The administrative hearing officer will then review all eight factors. If the hearing officer determines that such an exemption would not jeopardize the safety of the community or the church or whatever already exists there, the church, the school, the hospital, then the hearing officer can recommend that it move on to the liquor commissioner. This is essentially an extra safeguard so that it doesn't even get to the mayor, it doesn't even get to city council if the hearing officer determines that there's any reason that it would not, it would cause risk or detriment to the community in that area.
And just to be clear, this is not a requirement by state law. This is an extra step that the city put in to check some balances.
And we made it quite stringent so that it's clear that this is not an automatic process. It just allows them simply to apply, but there's still this burden to make sure that we are still protecting our schools, churches, and hospitals.
Alderman O'Connor?
Could you also clarify what I think is a little bit of confusion in regard to the 500 feet to the 100 feet? We are not reducing anything from 500 feet to 100 feet. That is the existence now. If you'll talk about the distinction between the 500 feet and the 100 feet.
If I could get my laptop to work the language. So what it is, is it's currently, no one can apply for a liquor license if they're within 100 feet of a church, school, or hospital. And that's property line to property line. So it might actually be quite further than 100 feet. But if the church, or the hospital, or the school owns that property, you're going to be measuring 100 feet from that.
So our current ordinance in Aurora says 100 feet from property line to property line.
Correct. And what this amendment does is it allows people to simply apply for an exemption of that 100 feet. But it doesn't automatically grant a liquor license. It just allows them simply to apply if they fall within that 100 feet.
Alderman Hartburns?
Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago, I asked that this item be held here at council because I wanted to meet with some religious leaders as well as educators. The due diligence was informational meeting. I was promised some time ago by the church that they were going to have some members here come to our meetings on a regular basis. So I thought that my being the one to ask them to come, that I would go to them, or they came to us here. My point is, right now, Marissa, we cannot stop a church from going next to a bar. Is that right?
If the church wants to go next, so the bar's already been established?
Mm-hmm. We can't stop them. So if the church want to go move right next to a bar, we can't stop it. So if we're saying that in all our due diligence, we're trying to protect be it our church, our school, our hospital, but the church right now have a right to go wherever. I go, use an example, I go by the mall, there's a church moving there right there by Hope Vine. And then, Hop Vine. So, and then I can go a little further. One of our school renovated next to a tavern. I go a little further, we have search and service agent right across the street from a tavern. So when you have that, and we could say whatever, what is happening already, we putting safeguards in there to protect our community and our churches. I'm a licensed evangelist missionary. I get licensed every year, where most churches don't do it every year. We get ours every year. Am I right, sister? All right, every year we get licensed every year. We have to go through it to get it. Most pastors get it one time and that's it. But in our church of God and Christ, you have to get it every year. My point is, if a church want to move next to that bar, there's nothing we can do. That's where the, where y'all talk about separating church and state. That's- That's where the separation church to state come in. We are the city. We may say how many parking space you can have, but guess what? If they don't have them, they're still the church. That's just the law. We didn't write that, it's been in place for a hundred years, however many years it's been. But the real deal is Peggy, you're a pastor or your mother's a pastor. Right now, a church, where your church is, a tavern could come right next door. We can't stop it. We can't stop it. Your church is there. And if you wanted to move somewhere, it's where there's a tavern. That's what it is. The law is what the law is. The church have that stronghold and that power. It was given because you're called a church. Now, I can talk about, I can go way back to Jewel being over there on Smith Street. Main Baptist was right there, but Jewel was right there too. And Oscar sold beer and wine. We have gas station in our neighborhood, guess what? Those gas station may have beer and wine, but the church can move right next to that gas station. Nothing we can say. They'll come to us and we would know that they're going there. But because of the separation church to state, we definitely cannot tell that church they cannot move next to that gas station. We can't do it. So here we are trying to put more teeth in this ordinance where it would go before hearing officer. And the aldermen's have a chance to see it themselves too. The aldermen's can see it, they would know what's going on. Now it just come to, it comes to our clerk and it will come to the committee. But we got other components in there now that we'll be able to see it. That's the real truth. We, we're trying to put more teeth in to protect us. No, we don't have any taverns right now, maybe, maybe want to come next to a church, but what does that happen? And what if a church want to go next to a tavern? What does, what do we do? We have something in place to protect that. And guess what? You as a church would know that's interested in coming there. But guess what? That tavern may have to let somebody know they want to go next to the church and we have to talk about that too. You're protected. So we trying to put that protected arm around all of it. And yes, we want to protect the church, born in it. That's all I know is church, born in it. But right now, the council is ready to vote on an ordinance amending Chapter six, alcohol liquor. Sixteen dash thirteen. All we're saying is to have the hearing officer, to have the alderman be aware. Because right now, it comes to right, it goes to the, the city clerk, it comes to the committee. Used to be government operation, that's public safety. It comes to the committee. And guess what? The aldermen will see it when it comes to committee of the hall. They won't see it before then, but now they have a chance to see what's coming into their neighborhoods. I think that's strength for us. I think that is strength for us. We need that strength.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
And I think that with us trying to pull it together and my meeting with the clergies and educators giving the due diligence, just letting you know, I was extending the olive branch. And all, not all the time this olive branch is good, but I was trying to be good at what I was doing. I was trying to help us help ourselves. That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about. And it's then that, it's then that we can say that we did a due diligence and we let everybody know. Because that ward, aldermen will have a chance to meet with their constituency then. But now it's premature. This calls that we're voting on is, what we're saying is, right now, we need to do a safeguard. We need to protect ourselves. And it may not ever happen, but if it do, we're ready. But right now, I can tell you, the church can go right next to a, to a tavern. What do we do? But I can also tell you that, I can also tell you educational group has moved right next to a restaurant that had liquor license. I can tell you that. Want me to name it for you? I can name it. And then I can tell you the other rest, the other church that went right next to tavern, I can tell you. But guess what? Because it is a church, they can do that. That's where that separation come in.
Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I, I wanted to talk about a couple of things that I had heard and I kind of corrected today and after what I heard from staff. So a woman called me today, resident, and she said, why are we putting liquor stores next to schools? And I said, well, I kind of clarified a few things and it's a liquor license thing. It's not necessarily going next to a school, it's reducing a hundred feet. I said, but what all it does now is give us discretion with safeguards, as Alderman Hartburns was talking about. And then fortunately, I had Alderman Bug's analogy last week, which thank you for the Italian restaurant one. If you're familiar with the fifth ward, and I explained to her that in the fifth ward, we have St. Paul's. And next to St. Paul's is the old Kung Fu. If a nice Italian restaurant want to go in there and want a liquor license, as they would, would we not want to entertain that? Would that not be an enhancement for the area? So when I, when I look at this, I don't look at a liquor store next to a school. I look at a potential enhancement to the community in a restaurant, maybe being in an area that's appropriate, even though there's a school or a church nearby, but we take a look at it at an individual basis. And that's really all this is. Because there's going to be situations come up, says, yes, I wish we didn't have that rule because that would have been a good fit over there. And the church would have been happy, and the school would have been happy, and the area would have been happy. And now we have that flexibility. And now we can make that happen because we have safeguards, but we have discretion. And we have a number of, of different levels we have to go through. The aldermen, as Shakita Hartburn said, the aldermen and the committee of the hall and the committee and the hearing officer and the mayor. So it, I, what I'm trying to say is, we're not going to have liquor stores next to schools. There will be a number of things to mitigate that, but we do want to have the flexibility to look at each case.
Let me just get Alderman Lofsky and then I'll come back.
I've received lots and lots of feedback on this issue. Overwhelmingly, usually it's sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, but one hundred percent of the people that have written to me are against it.
How many did you say?
Uh, probably fifteen. Seven emails. Regardless, I want to do what's best for the city and I want to do what's best for the city as my constituency. I'm not sure that this is clear. At the meeting that Alderman Burns had, which was great to have the clergy there, I thought it was clear that you can't even apply for a liquor license if you're within five hundred feet of a church or school. That's what was said, that's what I think the information's going out.
Within, within one hundred feet.
So, so now we're going to make it even easier that you can apply even closer? I think that's even worse. But the, I'm looking at the code. It says no new class A, B, E, F license can be issued after two thousand and three within five hundred feet of a residential property, blah, 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 blah. So, and then it talks.
You're looking at the wrong section.
Regardless, if we're making it easier within a hundred feet, I don't, I don't think it's a great idea. Let, let me finish. Yesterday, I went to a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. They said they want to do two things for their kids. They want them to be, have fun and they want them to be safe. Okay, so we talked a lot about churches here. I think the overwhelming sentiment at the church meeting was one hundred percent against this. Okay, so I think they need to hear that. Will, will you let me finish, please? This is not a high school debate. Do not interrupt me. Yes.
You know, order, order, go ahead, finish, Nylet, O'Connor.
Well, Alderman O'Connor. Okay, so you know what? Maybe not a hundred percent. I would say if there were twenty-five people, maybe twenty-four were against it. Regardless, we have an education committee. This is what I would like all, all aldermen to consider. We have an education committee with all the heads of all the schools on it. We need to send, and they meet once a month. We need to send this ordinance to them and get their feedback. I'm not saying if they say, hey, it's great, okay, then maybe we'll vote for it, maybe I won't be against it. But we have committees, we have leadership. Why don't we use them? Why wouldn't we get their feedback? This is obviously a hot issue. We have all these students here. I have six or seven thousand students in my ward and a lot of bars and restaurants. So I'm not sure that we really need bars and restaurants within a hundred feet of a church or school. It wasn't that long ago, I came out of the play Hairspray, walked by a restaurant where I parked and there was a murder in the parking lot. This is a nice restaurant downtown. We had issues on Indian Trail with bars. They're open, bars are open until one AM. So I represent a lot of bars. They can get licensed, they get a one AM license. We don't know if they're going to become a dance club. We don't know what's going to happen, you know, what, what can go on. So, I mean, what, what the other feedback I got is, why are we doing this? We've had two or three inquiries over two or three years. So why are we doing this? We've been told there's no imminent license application. So why are we doing this? Why are we spending all this time on this? And the other feedback I'm getting, which I've been saying for a year, is the current bar and restaurant owners were not doing anything for. They want to be able to sell their restaurant, they want to be able to sell their bar. We don't make liquor license transfer for them. So they're saying, hey, you're going to help all these new people coming in, give them a license easier, but what about us? You're not taking care of us. I also know as a lawyer, if we want someone to get a liquor license, whether it's a hundred feet, five hundred feet, we can do what's called a text amendment. It's basically like a variance. You go through the process, you go through all the meetings and we can change the zoning code and we can do it on a case by case basis. I think, I think first of all, like I said, we need feedback from this educational committee and then we'll see what happens. I'm very pro-business. I just don't think that this is a good idea until we get the feedback of all those people involved.
Thank you, Sarah Alderman O'Connor.
First, I wanted to say to Matia Valley and Rosy students, you came on a good night. You stayed and you got a little action here, so you report that back to your, your class. My comments will be simple and short. I oppose this change primarily because of the ability to change it to less than a hundred feet. I think it's worked. I don't see a reason for a change at this point. I don't think, as Alderman Lofsky has emphasized, that there's a great demand for this. I think it's reasonable in the long run. So I don't think we need to change it. If we do in fact want to change it to give this opportunity, my other point was that I think it should be kept within the committee. The, the Public Health and Safety Committee, or I never get their names straight, whatever it is at this point. I think that, yeah, former G O, that's the easy way to say it. I think it ought to stay there under the same conditions that are being set out for the committee to evaluate and approve the recommendation for a liquor license on that basis, whether they wish to reduce the distance or not reduce the distance. And I just think it's, it's reasonable to keep it within the council's direction, which we get to make the final decision on the issuance of a liquor license or expanding the category so that a liquor license is issued. So I will oppose this. I will say if it does not carry, I would ask that we reconsider, go back into the committee setting and look at the ability to keep it within the committee as again, using some of the same standards that I think have been developed, which are very reasonable and I think were well done in regard to how they were developed. I just don't think we need to change it at this point.
Alderman Franco, then we'll take a vote.
With all due respect to Alderman Lofsky, I think it's unacceptable that if staff tells you you are quoting the wrong section of the ordinance and you say regardless, we can't debate things that aren't facts. We can't debate data that's not true. So if we're going to have a debate up here, an honest debate, we have to go with what is actually said in the ordinance. And we can't contradict staff and say, but. No, it's not but, these are the words. This is, this is what we're talking about. If we don't talk about that, we have no business being up here because we don't know what we're talking about anymore. It has to be based on what we have. And if legal is, is tasked with giving us the data, we have to accept the data. I mean, otherwise we can't have an honest debate. It just doesn't happen.
You know, Kirk, why don't you go ahead and call the, the order, call the, call the vote. I'm sorry, Alderman Hartburns.
About two weeks ago in council here, I put out a text, Tuesday, August twenty-seventh at seven seventeen. Adrian, can you please meet next week with the clergies and educators in reference to the alcohol and liquor ordinance entitled Allowed Area? I'm sorry? You, no, no.
Well, don't have, don't have conversation with the clerk.
This was sent to Adrian Holloway. That's what I said from the dice that I was going to get in contact with Adrian Holloway to meet with the ministers that she worked with as well as educators in reference to a judge was saying. What she did respond, she said, thanks for the explanation, I explained to her what was going on. She said she met with many of them on Wednesday and for those that would be able to come and share information, they would like to be there. She indicated this. She said, I want to let you know that I sent a notice out to my clergies and my educators list yesterday. The list consists of sixty people. I have received some response back of people who are interested in information but may not be able to come. She said, I suggest sending a proxy to meet with you if that's possible. You may have seen the article in the Beacon today. Beacon, okay. She said, and then she's regarding the vote of the ordinance for section ten. I hope this will serve as encouragement for the people to attend the meeting. I will say that the list that I have right here was my initial list, but the sign in sheet ended up being two pages. My point is, there were some that no, I was not able to meet. And Peggy, you was one of them because you answered your phone. So anyway, my point is, for those that have come, and Cynthia Miller was in the room, we did not hear the senses that Judge just said. She was in the room. And the other minister that I've spoken to that has the understanding of it, they did not feel the same way he just explained. My points do remain the same. I don't feel that we need to meet and meet and meet. We have done that. The meet, the, these meetings are open to the public and, and all the stuff is online. What we're doing on, on agendas, all you have to do is read it and come to the meeting. My points do remain the same.
Clerk, can you?
Mr. American, one more.
All right, all right, one, one last, you haven't spoken yet.
All right.
Go ahead.
Um, so I do have a perfect example and this is what I'm thinking about. A family built a nice restaurant on the corner of Elmwood and Illinois Avenue. It's Aurora Taqueria. Beautifully done, executed a lot of investment, had a concrete driveway. I mean, they put some money into this place. But it's next to McCleary School. It's, you know, by the way we define these, property line to property line, it's sixty-six feet away from McCleary School. But anybody that knows that neighborhood knows it's probably a thousand feet, building to building to that school. So what I would like to do, and, and these owners talked to me in the initial and I told them you're going to have trouble with a liquor license, but now we have an opportunity for these folks to, to be successful. Used to be, used to sell watermelons on that corner, that was it. These guys made a big investment in there and, and I would like for the opportunity for them to be able to serve a beer with the tacos at that location. I think that's what this ordinance gives us. So if you're looking for an example, that, that's what I'm thinking about.
You know, Ed Bug, he hasn't had an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Denell. Yeah, I, I think we're looking at the extreme cases and really we're, we're just looking at giving discretion and reviewing these matters. Definitely the aldermen who were elected to represent the people of the wards, if there is going to be an issue of a liquor store coming in near a school or a church being established as such, I'm certain that aldermen, I hope that aldermen would reach out to the constituents and talk to them and there will be dialogue. We're, we're working on a lot of different things, a lot of moving, moving parts. And what we just discussed maybe a week, two weeks ago, the instance of a preschool being next to a hair salon. That is what? Nothing, right? But what if that hair salon has women coming in who want to have a bridal party, have a glass of champagne? We're considering giving that liquor license. And they're next to each other. It's benign, but we would not have the opportunity to enhance that hair salon, that place giving manicures and pedicures to women and men. You would have to stay where you are. You would not be able to enhance your business because you're close to a preschool or some other type of establishment of that nature. And so we're not just looking at a bar next to a school. That's extreme case. A liquor store next to a school, that's an extreme case. And certainly, as I said, the elected officials would certainly address that. But we just want to have the discretion to look at matters where they could be benign or, or not have an impact on the community and be able to help that business and that business community.
All right.
I think the aldermen are missing one form, one serious point, though. Again, we need to get input from the education committee and the ministerial committee. I mean, and these two examples that Bill and Ed just gave, they knew when he built that restaurant, he wasn't going to liquor license. They knew when they built that salon, they weren't going to get a liquor license. So I don't think those are good examples. And I would say that if we got a list from that meeting that Shakita had, I guarantee you, we, we, we will get how everyone's going to vote and I guarantee you, it'll be overwhelmingly against it.
Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Sebel?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lofsky?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
No.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Ten As, two NAs.
All right, resolution passes and it is approved. So let's go on to new business, I'm sorry, ordinance is adopted after motion being carried. Let's go on to new business. Clerk, can you, is there a motion to suspend rules to consider items in our new business? All right, motion by Alderman Hartburn, second by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
No.
Twelve As.
Motion carries. Can you read the first item in our new business clerk?
Nineteen dash zero seven eight three, an ordinance authorizing the corporation council to transfer a portion of the property located at 10 East Donner Place for nominal consideration.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, I'm sorry, by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this ordinance? There being no question or discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries, ordinance is adopted. Clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
Nineteen dash zero seven nine four, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Jennifer Stallings as city clerk.
Has been motioned by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Before we take a roll, let me ask Ms. Stallings if you would please stand. And I believe your parents are in the room with you. If they would stand up as well. You're very welcome. Welcome to Aurora to your parents. All right, there's been a motion, the second, no questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion, go ahead.
Twelve As.
All right, motion carries, resolution's approved. One more round of applause for Ms. Stallings. Soon to be our new city clerk.
Louis would say, get up here.
She'll be looking for that relief suit. All right, is there a motion to approve and pay the bills on the list? A list on the agenda, motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions concerning the bills? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshi.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries, the bills are approved. With no further business coming before the city council, Alderman Hartburns has moved to adjourn. Uh, I'm sorry, Alderman, Alderman.
I just want to say to Alex Voight, thank you for filling in. You've done a very good job, very commendable.
But, oh, all right, yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Now, she's not leaving right away. But thank you for saying that. Right, right. All right. So all right, with no further business coming before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn with motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco, all in favor? All right, um, this meeting is so, is adjourned.